...four, Routine Business. Board Secretaries Report for April 2022. The Treasurers Report for April 2022. The Budget Receipts and Transfers for April 2022. The Monthly Transfer Report for June 8th, 2022. High School Activities Report for May 2022. The Food Service Management Cost Performance Statement for May 2022. The Certified Bill List for May 5th through May 31st and June 1st through June 8th, 2022. Approval Minutes, Regular Minutes of May 10th, 2022. Mr. Kenny, can I have a motion to approve Section 4, Routine Business, Items A through I? Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Trumpay. Comments or questions from the board? Hearing them will take a vote. Ms. Quinn?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion approved. Moving on to Routine Matters. The Enrollment Report for June 10th, 2022. The Health Report for May of '22. Fire Alarm Report for May of '22. The Crisis Drill Report for May of '22. The HIB Report. And the Superintendent's Monthly Report. Mr. Capello.
Thank you, Mrs. Fitzwater. And I'm going to do something unprecedented, and I'm going to yield my time to our student liaisons with one small exception, because I have a microphone on and I can't not talk. So I wanted to give one shout out. This is sort of the goodbye tour for our seniors. This is their last week before next Tuesday's graduation. And a very special thank you to Mrs. Di Clemente, who prepared today's event, which was a walk down memory lane. If you're not on our social media outlets, please go there and check it out. It was a fantastic event today. Our seniors got to walk the halls of New Albany Rush and the middle school for one last time and say goodbye and thank you to all the teachers that made it possible. And just seeing the makeup of this room, it's such an awesome event to see our young people have a chance to see what awaits them when they graduate in 12th grade. So thank you to everyone that made that possible today. And with that, I will yield my time.
Ally Nider for the high school?
Good evening, everyone. The Golden Apple Award was given to Mr. Kyle Hart. The May Students of the Month are the following students. Class of 2022, Nicholas Delio. Class of 2023, Santino Leon. Class of 2024, James Smith. And Class of 2025, Annella Asbury. All spring sports have finished their 2022 seasons. The baseball season ended in the semifinal of Group 2 South Playoffs with a score of 5-3 against Cedar Creek on Tuesday, June 7th. The boys had an overall record of 15-8. The softball team finished with a record of 12-10. They beat Haddonfield 2-1 with an extra inning in the first round of playoffs. The golf team finished with a record of 9-2. Tennis season ended with a record of 6-10. Boys volleyball team finished their season with a record of 9-15. The girls lacrosse team ended their season with an overall record of 13-3 and had a BCSL record of 8-1. They were led by senior captains Veronica Campbell, Jenna Avril, and Allison Bailey and made it to the first round of playoffs. The boys lacrosse team finished with a record of 9-7. The track team is having a successful season so far. At the state meet this past weekend, Junior Derek Cosiano placed 8th in the 800, Junior Rochelle Johnson placed 8th in shot put, and sophomore Derek Robinson placed 7th in high jump. Junior Alex Boyko advances to the Meet of Champions in the 3200, and the boys 4x800 team of Junior Matt McCarron, Derek Cosiano, and Alex Boyko and freshman Ryan Malinowski will be on next Saturday. The Fourth Annual Red and Black Games were held on June 2nd and 3rd. Participation was excellent overall. The black team was victorious for this year, which was the fourth year for this event. Student Council new officers were elected for the 2022-2023 school year on June 6th. Congratulations to the new officers and thank you to all the candidates for showing interest in CHS. On Thursday, June 2nd, the CHS choir took part in the annual cabaret and shared their individual talents for an appreciative crowd. Students sang songs from Broadway to pop tunes to opera. What a wonderful showcase for the hard-working students at the end of the year. CHS said goodbye to Miss Nicely on May 27th, but before she left, the Cinnamonsen District Band Concert members got to wish her a special goodbye. Thank you to Miss Nicely for the many years of music education at Cinnamonsen, and we wish her the very best at her next adventure in Portland. Special congratulations to Junior Sri Ramalongo for his community achievements, which were recently highlighted to the May issue of the South Jersey Magazine. CHS is so proud of you, Sri Ram. To Alex Boyko, who was named winner of the NJEA New Jersey Hall of Fame Essay Contest. Alex's essay nominating U.S. Representative Mary Theresa Norton was noted for its creativity and impassioned support of Representative Norton's inclusion for the Hall of Fame. Because of this essay, Representative Norton will now be considered for the induction into the Hall of Fame Selection Committee. Hall of Fame. On Thursday, June 9th, the newly inducted Cinnamonsen High School Class of 2022 members were surprised in their classes during third periods 3-5. Teachers arrived and gave their moving speeches to the inductees, and administrators and parents were present. Congratulations to all nominees and inductees. The seniors are winding down their tenure at CHS. On Tuesday, June 14th, their day started with graduation practice, continued with a walk down memory lane as they walked the halls of all the schools of Cinnamonsen, and culminated with Senior Day. Senior night is June 16th, and graduation is on June 21st, followed by project graduation. Congratulations to CHS Class of 2022. I would now like to announce Emma Schreier as a Board of Education Liaison for the 2020 to 2023 school year. Thank you all for such an amazing year. This is an experience I'm glad I've got to have. Despite all the challenges we face, I'm very grateful for everyone on the school board for everything they've done to try and help the students and the staff. And I truly will treasure this opportunity and things I've learned from it. So again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ally. It's been a pleasure having you on here as our high school liaison. For those of you who don't come to very many meetings, and I know that's most of you, we do have a liaison from the high school and a liaison from the middle school who come to our meetings every month and give updates on each of the schools. And Ally Nider, because I keep mispronouncing her last name, was our high school liaison this year. She is off to Pitt in the fall. And Olivia Ruggeri is our middle school representative, and she's going to give our middle school report.
It has been a pleasure serving you as Board of Education Student Representative. Our Students of the Month for May are 6th grader Delaney Trampay, 7th grade Jake Barbick, and 8th grade Sarah Delgrippo. Fitness Frenzy was also held on May 20th. Students enjoyed the time outside with friends while participating in physical activities. In addition, physical activities, the students also participated in mindfulness session provided by Miss Amy Lee Flower from the Robin Company. They also enjoyed refreshments and a treat from Kona Ice Truck provided by the Home and School. Thank you to all of our Home and School volunteers for spending the day with us. Our 7th and 8th grade students participated in Career Day, June 9th. Parents, staff, family members, and community members shared their schooling, training activities related to their job and other information. Students attended and self-selected sessions and gained a wealth of knowledge about potential future careers. Our 8th grade luau was on Friday, June 10th. Students enjoyed fruit, Kona Ice Truck, and a variety of goodies. Courtyard games, and most importantly, danced the night away. Thank you to the Home and School for organizing donations and dance decorations. Our school was transformed into a tropical paradise. We had lots of activities over the last few weeks. All of the music concerts were well-attended, and our students showed off their year's worth of work to packed audience. Students were recognized for the People's Choice Awards, academic awards, and our 8th grade attended Great Adventure yesterday. It was a great day, and students had a blast. Tomorrow, our 6th and 7th grade students are attending skating social at the Rink. Thank you.
Thank you, Olivia. And Olivia will be moving to CHS in the fall. I'd just like to give them a little something before they go. Mr. Bromholm, can I have a motion to approve Section 5, Routine Matters, Letters A through F?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Trumpay. Comments or questions from the board? Hearing them will take a vote. Ms. Icahn?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion approved. We're going to move on to the presentation of student awards. Started off by Mr. Capello.
I promised I wouldn't tap the microphone or play with the gooseneck too much. So once again, thank you all for being here. I would say that the audience turnout is not only atypical for a regular board meeting. We haven't done this event in a couple of years, but I can wholeheartedly say that this is the most folks that we have had in this room for an award ceremony, at least in the last seven years that I've been a part of Cinnamonsen schools. And it makes me really proud, and I heard a great comment from a parent that this is maybe a little bit of pent-up recognition and awesome, because this is a week, a couple weeks here in Cinnamonsen, of recognition all leading up to our high school graduation on Tuesday. And speaking of that, I'm going to introduce our first speaker and award giver this evening from Cinnamonsen High School. I'd like to welcome up our principal, Mr. Ryan Gorman.
Good evening. We will start our awards this evening by recognizing our 2022 valedictorian, Grace Grace will graduate from Cinnamonsen High School with an overall GPA of 105.41. During her time at CHS, she took 21 honors and AP courses and scored a 1540 on the SAT. In January of this year, she was awarded the New Jersey State Seal of Biliteracy in French. She is a three-year recipient of the Burlington County Principals and Supervisors Association Award, which recognizes the top student in 10th, 11th, and 12th grade at each of the Burlington County high schools. In fact, this year, she was recognized by the BCPSA as the Dr. Jerry Architella Memorial Scholarship Award winner. Grace's interests are as varied and equally impressive as her academic accomplishments. She has participated in Adventure Fitness, Consumer Bowl, Concert Choir, Drama Club, French Club, Glamour Girls, Global Economic Forum, Homecoming Committee Interact, International Student Summit, it keeps going, Math League, Mock Trial, Model Student Senate, Stop, The Ship's Log, Student Council, and World Affairs Council. She was inducted into the National Honor Society as a junior. She served as a class treasurer for three years. She was a founding member of the Technology Student Association, and she was the chair of the CHS Food Pantry. Grace is also a talented athlete. She's been a four-year member of Varsity Cross Country and Spring Track. In her senior year, she was named captain of both the girls' cross-country team and the girls' track team, and was named to the First Team BCSL, All-Star Team in Cross Country. Grace is an exceptional individual and a truly deserving valedictorian. She will be continuing her education next year at Princeton University, where she will be studying biological and chemical engineering. Our next award winner was not able to join us this evening, as she's competing in the South Jersey All-Star Lacrosse Game in Ocean City this evening, but her accomplishments warrant recognition even in her absence. Our 2022 salient valedictorian, Veronica Campbell. Veronica will graduate from Cinnamonsen High School with an overall GPA of 104.18 while taking 21 honors and AP courses during her time at CHS. In January of this year, she was awarded the New Jersey State Seal of Biliteracy in French, and she scored a 1440 on the SAT. While a student at CHS, Veronica has been very involved in a variety of clubs and activities. She has been a member of the Battle of the Books, French Club, Future Educators of America, Glamour Girls, Homecoming Committee Interact, Math League, Physics Olympics, and Stop. She was inducted into the National Honor Society as a junior and served as a chapter president as a senior. Veronica is a particularly talented athlete. She's a four-year varsity soccer player and a three-year varsity lacrosse player. She would undoubtedly have been a four-year varsity player in lacrosse also if COVID-19 had not derailed her season in her sophomore year. She was named to the First Team BCSL in lacrosse during her junior year and was our April Athlete of the Month that same year. In her senior year, she won the Unsung Hero Award in the girls' soccer team. She was named captain of the girls' lacrosse team, again nominated for First Team All-American and Second Team All-South Jersey. Finally, just yesterday, Veronica was named an Academic All-American and received the Jackie Pitt Award from USA Lacrosse. Next year, Veronica will be attending the College of New Jersey, where she will be a member of their girls' lacrosse team. Thank you, Mr. Gorman. What amazing accomplishments by those two young ladies. And it was always very important for this Board of Education for the young people in the audience to see what you can aspire towards over the course of your academic career here in Cinnamonsen. And with that, I'd like to invite up Mrs. Jones, principal of the New Albany School, who will be giving out awards to our New Albany School students.
All right. If I could have all of the New Albany students come around this way and line up here. Mrs. Gallagher is going to put you in line if you are receiving an award this evening.
Again, any student award recipients from New Albany School, if you'd come up to the side here so Mrs. Gallagher can put you in order and you can get your recognition this And to all of our young people, especially those whose feet don't touch the floor, you're being very well behaved, and we appreciate it very, very much. And for those of you who are waiting to go to the carnival, I promise you, we'll be
All right. While Mrs. Gallagher gets the rest of the students lined up, I will begin. So the first awards are going to students who participated in the Fire Prevention Poster Contest. This is an annual contest that we coordinate and work with our Cinnamonsen Fire Department as well as our art teacher. And the first student who won an award is Mary Edmensen. She is in second grade, and her artwork advanced to the county level in the Fire Department Next up, we have Evelyn Kelleher. She was first grade for the Fire Prevention Poster Contest. We also have Delaney Erwiler, who is a kindergartner, and I'm not sure if she's here. I don't see her in line. Is Delaney here? All right. She may not be with us this evening. Moving right along, we have a kindergarten student, Daniel Apperson, whose artwork also moved on to the county level to be judged there. All right. Those are our winners for the Fire Prevention Poster Contest. Next up, we have the Jump Into Reading Challenge, and this is an annual reading contest that is coordinated with Senator Singleton from the 7th Legislative District. First up, we have Douglas Formson, who is a kindergarten student. Followed by Christopher Huron, first grade student. I knew he was here. And we also have Dwayne Formson, second grade student. Okay. Our next set of awards are for our Invention Convention students, who got first, second, and third prize. First up, we have Jason Costantini, who won first place for the sandwich clip. In second place, we have Avery Grace Stickel, and she invented the fork stick. In third place for Invention Convention was Jake Hood for the My Size Mailbox. Our next set of awards are for the Kids' Heart Challenge, and these students raised awareness about heart health, and all donations went towards the American Heart Association. Each year, we have all of our second grade students showcase their talents for our second grade T-shirt. And this year's selected art is from Lexi Persiano. So congratulations, Lexi. Her artwork will be on the second grade T-shirt. All right. Next up, we have our Pirate Leaders. This year, our counselor, Ms. Moller, worked with our second grade teachers, and they selected representatives from each of our homerooms. These students embody our character traits of patience, kindness, honesty, respect, and manners, and they helped Ms. Moller with all of our school-based events for the entire year. We have Rocco Sermonera. All right. Great job to our Pirate Leaders. And finally, we'll round out the evening for New Albany with our Second Grade Enrichment Book Club. We had one of our Cinnamonsen educator alumnus come back, Mrs. Therese Garbet, and she volunteered her time at New Albany this year. These students embraced their love of reading, and they created a book club this year, reading three novels within four months. Amelia Anashenko could not be with us this evening, but she's also in the book club. And Evelyn Rio. All right. I will turn the podium over to Mrs. DeSimone and Mrs. Mealy.
Good evening, everyone. Could I have my Rush School honorees come over and line up next to Mrs. Mealy? He won the Chick-fil-A bet. Okay. So first up tonight, I would like to honor our Fire Prevention Poster Contest winners. This is sponsored by the Cinnamonsen Fire Department in collaboration with Mr. Carroll, our visual arts teacher at Rush. Thank you to both of them. The theme this year was Learn the Sounds of Fire Safety. Our two local winners received a certificate and Amazon gift card. Congratulations to 4th grader Ivy Lynn. Okay. Ivy wasn't able to join us tonight. Our 3rd grade winner, her poster has actually moved on to the state-level contest, where she has the chance of winning a new computer, and that is Sofia DeFrancesco. Next up, we have our, it's very important, Kids' Heart Challenge, our Kids' Heart Challenge Awards. Nope, that's a water festival. Okay, we're going to switch it up. All right. Next up, we have our 4th grade Water Festival. We do this yearly. It's a celebration. All right. Who's messing with me? Keep going back and back. There we go. Okay. 4th grade Water Festival. Okay. This is a celebration of water. It helps to raise awareness of conservation of the natural resource. And each year, part of our Water Festival, we challenge our students to create a rainstick. We had over 50 entries, and these are our top six winners. For Best Decor, Kate Billman, who was unable to join us tonight. And Ms. Ava Neal. With her lovely flamingo water stick. I love it. Right over here, Ava. Look. For Best Sound, we had two winners, happened to come from the same family, so I'm thinking they used some very similar techniques there in creating. Connor Mullin. Right up here, bud. And his sister. Look at Mom. Courtney Mullin. Yeah, let's get a picture together. And then our best overall winners, which were the best decor with the best sound, Ms. Saralina Hawkins. And Ethan Doerr. I'd like to thank Mrs. Allison Freibel, a Rush School parent, for continuing the tradition that Mrs. Mendelo began 20 years ago. Okay. On my next one. All right, so now we have our Battle of the Books. So the Battle of the Books is a competition in which students voluntarily form a team of five to six students to read 10 pre-selected books. The competition occurs across New Jersey and in some other states as well. In March, we held our Rush School Battle of the Books. Rush School's team consisted of the following six boys, who beat the second-place Rush team by one point. Congratulations to these boys. Our first up is Ben Campbell. Next up, we have Brendan DiBarbary. He was unable to join us. Next, we have Luke Feeley. Next, we have Josiah Guyton. John Caffenberg. And last but not least, Michael Zuccarelli, who also was unable to join us. I want to thank Mrs. Kimberly Porter, Rush School Reading Specialist, for organizing this event for our students. Okay, what's up next? Okay, Invention Convention, all right. So our Invention Convention is run by Ms. Lauren Coker at the high school, and we are so thankful to have it back in person this year. Students across the Cinnamons and District were challenged to bring their creative inventions to life, and these are our Rush School students who rose up and delivered. In second place among the third and fourth grade inventors with their toasty toboggan, Christian Gulbin and Carson Hanna. There we go. All right. In third place among the third and fourth grade inventors with her invention, the friendly glove, Giovanna Gamarres. In second place among the fifth and sixth grade inventors with her picky eaters app, Elizabeth, or as we like to call her, Liesl Zimmerman. And first place among the third and fourth grade inventors with his chopping planter, Aiden Arcano. Okay, up next, we have the Sedexo's Future Chef Competition. This was a fun one, definitely lots of yummy food. So this past March, five Rush School students were selected to take part in the Future Chef Competition. All Rush students were encouraged to submit recipes based on their favorite book or movie. Congratulations to our Rush School students who participated. Nicholas Crum. Ms. Charlotte Freed. Alex Kelly. Konstantin Katsakis, Dean Katsakis. All right, turn around. Smile for Dad. And a huge congrats goes to Josiah Guyton for winning with his delicious Ratatouille recipe. There you go. All right, and I want to thank Mrs. Lisa Frederick, our district's cafeteria manager, for organizing this delicious event. Okay, and I think finally, we have our Steam Tank Challenge. Project Challenge students in third, fourth, and fifth grade all entered group inventions into the Steam Tank Challenge, which was sponsored by the U.S. Army and the New Jersey School Boards Association. Twelve groups made it to the regionals round, and two groups made it to the final round, presenting to judges this past May. The students in the final round are as follows. The fifth grade team created the Eco Bear, which was an environmentally-friendly teddy bear whose filling was replaced with plastic shopping bags rather than traditional stuffing. The following students are a part of this team. Mr. Noah Bundy. Grace Collins. Macklin Platnacki. And Frank Rio. The third grade team invented the Happy Habitat Animal Collection, which are stuffed animal toys representing different habitats from around the world made from recycled materials and which play sounds from the habitat in which the animal can be found. The following students that are a part of this team, Aiden Arcano. Matthew Dougherty. Jack Calhoun. Gavin Chalakos. And Anna Shaw. We got some exciting news today. We would like to first thank Mr. Rob Lyons for organizing this, but we received some news from this contest, that both of these teams won the Sustainability Award. The Eco Bears also won the Innovative Use of Technology and Design Award, and the Happy Habitat team won the Subject Matter Expert Award and the Human-Built Environment Award. Fantastic work. Okay, and last but not least, we have our Kids' Heart Challenge. So for 43 years, the Kids' Heart Challenge has focused on whole-body wellness, helping students improve their own health and better their character while raising lifesaving donations for the American Heart Association. When Rush School raised $21,000 last school year, we were excited to up our goal to $22,000 for 2022. Well, we blew that goal out of the water. Rush School students, families, and staff raised an incredible $32,366. Our top fundraisers in each grade level are, in fifth grade, Edward Chalk. In fourth grade, Madely Stickel. And in third grade, and our top fundraiser in the school, Luke Farron, who raised $1,474. A special thank you to Mr. Baldassari, our phys ed teacher, for organizing and promoting this event. Thanks, everyone.
All right, thank you. We appreciate everybody hanging in there. This time, I'd like to introduce Mrs. Melcher, principal of Cinnamons and Middle School.
Good evening, everybody. Will the very patient middle school students in the audience being recognized tonight make your way to the side aisle area at this time? Thank you. Anybody who's standing in the back, we do have some open seats now. Feel free to make your way up.
There are seats in the front row. Someone wants to come up?
Okay, so this evening, we're going to begin with our award winners for the VFW's Patriots' Pen Essay Contest. Our third place winner this year, Maggie Guinan. In second place this year, Samantha Bobrin. And the first place winner in this year's contest, Meredith Warner. Next, we have the winners for this year's South Jersey Now Alice Paul Essay Contest. In second place, Mia Zuccarelli. And in first place, Shayna Koch. Our next award is the NJ SBA Eighth Grade Dialogue Student Representative for this year's Class of 2022, Samantha Danowski. Next up, we have our award winners from the Western Burlington County Honor Band, conducted this year at Cinnamons and High School by our very own Dr. Nick DeSalvio. For the flute, Madison Mozy. Also for the flute, Deshaun Miller. On the clarinet, Tyler Davis. Bass clarinet, Ethan Schreier. Alto sax, Robert Jacob. On the trombone, Gabrielli Silvestine. Battery percussion, Alexis Meanan. And symphony, Phoebe Kershaw. Next up, our award winner for the All South Jersey Chorus Junior High Choir, Samantha Bobrin. Next, we have our middle school winners from the Invention Convention. In third place this year with her Thermo Straw, Michaela Zell. And in first place with Thermo Stickers, Madeline Farrell. And we'll call back up Michaela Zell, third place in the Invention Convention. Right off the field. And our last category this evening are our participants from the Battle of the Books, who I have to sadly report defeated the staff in our battle this year. We're gonna start with our winners in grades five to six. Shay Gulbin. Taylor Hanna. Jackson Lean. Madison Danowski. Maggie Guinan. And Madeline Farrell. And now for the members of the seventh and eighth grade team, Emily Crane. Charlotte Dranchak. Isadora Guthrie. Any keyboards? Congratulations to our middle-school award winners.
At this time, I'd like to welcome back up Mr. Ryan Gorman, Principal of Cinnamons and High School, alongside Ms. Caitlin McCann, Assistant Principal of Cinnamons and High School. Alongside we have Mr. Jay Miley, Athletic Director, and thank you to all of our very patient high-schoolers and high-schooler parents and board member parents.
Sue Jenkins. What's happening, bro? Nice to see you.
At this time, if all of the high-school students that are here to be awarded could move their way over to the right side of the room so you're ready to receive your award, while they're doing so, let me introduce our Assistant Principal, Dr. McCann.
We're going to start with our 2022 State Seal of Biliteracy in French, Veronica Campbell. Juliana DeCesar. Claudia Massey Antonio. And Alessandro Mongelli. 2022 State Seal of Biliteracy in Spanish, Mianna Alessandrone. Dante Alfred. Allison Bailey. Eman Black. Makaya Blayman. Mario Funes Rivera. Sabrina Grunsby. Brandon Hilwig. Vivian Jang. Isabella Jones. Gianna Jones. Sean Kennedy. Colin Kynes. If I said your name and you're actually here, you should come up and get a certificate. Yeah. All right. Come on, come on, come on. John McLean. Hannah Ortiz Strauss. Kylie Rhodey. Laura Sickler. All right, 2022 Seal of Biliteracy in Portuguese, Gabriela Bontempo. Sri Ramalang, if you could come up. Our next 3 awards are all for Sri Ram. He was the Invention Convention 1st Place winner, the South Jersey Now Alice Paul Chapter Essay Contest winner, and the Carson Scholar Scholarship Award winner. Next, for an SAT perfect score in math, Nicholas Olson. Our VFW Voice of Democracy Post winner, Alex Boyko. Our Poetry Out Loud Regional winner, Hannah Ortiz Strauss. The Southeastern Pennsylvania Physics Olympics 1st Place winner in the Aluminum Foil Tower Event, Eli Kern, Dimitri Malahas, Ryan Cosiano, and Derek Cosiano. While they're up here, Alex and Maddie also took 1st place in the Wind Powered Lifter For the Boy Scouts of America achieving the rank of Eagle Scout, Ryland Ross. For the All South Jersey Orchestra, Juliana DeCesar. Rachel Mattson. And Felicitas Ehringer. Juliana, if you can wait for 1 minute. So Rachel and Juliana actually also were all, both inducted into the All-State Wind Ensemble. And Juliana was also inducted into the All South Jersey Wind Ensemble, the All-State Orchestra, and the All-National Concert Band. Next is the All South Jersey Choir, Brianna Patrella. Noah Devone. Nick Olson. Sid Dupew. Morgan Hoben. Emma Schreier. Chelsea Von Posniak. Dean Clark. And from that group, Morgan, Emma, and Chelsea were also inducted into the All-State Choir.
Next up, we would like to recognize our Boys Cross Country Team with 3 members that made the All-State level. Alex Boyko, Tyler Schill, and Matt McCarron. Alex was also recognized as part of the All South Jersey Boys Cross Country Team this For All-State and Boys Soccer, we have Sean Kennedy, Nathan White, Colin Kenville, and Sean, Nathan, and Colin were also all recognized in the All South Jersey Teams voted by the In addition, we have our Boys VRC Soccer Team here today. For the 2nd time only in school history, they were successful in winning the South Jersey Soccer Coaches Association Tournament. To give you an idea of what that is, that's all schools in South Jersey, whether it's parochial, Group 1, Group 2, Group 3, Group 4, is an invitational tournament. So your field during the season, or your play during the season gets you in, and then you have to play whoever, you know, is in front of you. And our boys, for the 2nd time since 1979, I believe, the team won this prestigious tournament. Ryan Adams. David Baroda. Brett Cassi. John Seelisick. Owen Digney. Robert Dreher. William Frazo. Gabe Huer. Noah Huber. Dean Karch. Sean Kennedy. Colin Kenville. Nate Mestrangelo. Tim Morrell. Christian Palmer. Michael Pappas. Josh Pereira. Aiden Quinn Wright. Ryan Rivers. Jack Salmon. Nate White. Guys, we might have to do like, a couple of you in the front tier. Take the lead, White. Couple guys getting the front tiered a little bit. If any other parents would like to come up to take a photo, they're more than welcome For All-State and Girls Soccer, we have 2 seniors, Emma Fugel and Carly Jaeger. In addition, Carly was voted by the Girls Soccer Coaches of South Jersey as Defender of the Year. Our next 3 words go to a Cinnamons and Wrestler by the name of Sam Koch. This season, Sam earned his 106th career wins. Sam also was recognized as an All South Jersey Wrestler, and he was the 2022 Regional Champion in addition to placing at the state tournament. All South Jersey Swimming, we have Juliana Wall. We have an All South Jersey Sectional Champion in the Discus, Malachi Etienne. Last but not least, we also have Girls Basketball Player of the Year for the Burlington County Thank you and congratulations to all of our high-school students.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for joining us here tonight for the presentation of the awards from the Board of Education. I appreciate everybody who stayed through the entire ceremony, again, particularly our youngest folks to get to see what is possible when you get to high school. At this time, I'm going to ask Mrs. Fitzwater to take a brief recess. So if anyone would like to come up and take any pictures, we're going to take a brief 10-minute recess. Once they approve it.
Okay, we're moving on to Section 8 Correspondence to the Board, if anyone has anything. Okay, and we are moving on to Section 9 Committee Reports. There was a Curriculum Committee meeting this month, and Mr. Kenny is going to give us a brief summary of that.
Thank you. The Curriculum and Student Activities Committee met on June 8th, virtually. The committee heard a proposal related to investigating the use of restorative practices at Cinnamons and High School. This will be a multi-year phase-in that would begin with 3 to 4 staff members being trained at the end of the summer. Pretty excited about this prospect here. Another exciting item is the Committee Review Plans for the Development of a Wellness Room at the high school that mirrors what many other Bronx County high schools have developed in the past year as schools continue to focus on mental health support. Also something very exciting to look forward to. There was a review of the District's Every Student Succeeds Act allocations, as was an amendment to the District's ARP-ESR application. And that is all. The next meeting has not been scheduled yet. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kenny. Ms. Quin, can I have a motion to approve Section 9 Committee Reports, Item A? Second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Trumpay. Comments or questions from the Board? Hearing that, we'll take a vote. Ms. Ico?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion approved. Going on to 10, Public Comment on Anything Appearing on the Agenda. Moving on to Section 11, Personnel Certificated. Mr. Capello.
Thank you, Mrs. Fitzwater. I'm under Section 11, Letter A. Number 1, seeking the Board to approve the appointment of Crystal Soha School Nurse at the New Albany School effective for the 2022-23 school year. Number 2, seeking the Board to accept the approval by the County Superintendent the Business Administrator Board Secretary's Contract for Melissa Livinggood for the 22-23 school year. Number 3, seeking the Board to approve the correction in salary for Travis Igboing, Athletic Trainer at Cinnamons and High School. Number 4, seeking the Board to approve the salary correction for the following staff members listed in the agenda. Number 5, seeking the Board to approve the- school year. Under Letter B, Retirement or Resignation, seeking the board to accept the resignation for purposes of retirement of Sue Siegler, CST after nine years of service to the children of Cinnamons and effective June 30, 2022. Teaching Overloads, under Letter C, seeking the board to approve the full year overage of Kimberly Slater at the high school to teach an exploratory business class. Under Letter D, Certificated Staffing Assignments, seeking the board to approve the assignments for certificated staff for the 22-23 school year, and those assignments are attached. Under Letter E, seeking advanced, oh, nothing under Letter E. Under Letter F, Extra Duty Appointments, and number one, seeking the board to approve the attached list of teachers for five hours of Desmos Mathematic Platform Training on June 23, 2022. Number two, seeking the board to approve the attached list of teachers for the summer PLC work in mathematics up to 12 hours. And number three, seeking the board to approve the additional 15 minutes of previously approved hours of ESY teachers and aides from 8:45 to 12:30 Monday through Thursday. And number four, seeking the board to approve the below-listed employees for the extended school year program at the New Albany School and High School beginning July 5 through August 4, and they are listed in the agenda. Under number five, seeking the board to approve the below-listed paraprofessionals for the extended school year at the New Albany and High School beginning July 5 through August 4, and they are listed in the agenda. Under number six, seeking the board to approve Kimberly Slater for preparing the initial curriculum writing map, the High School Fundamentals of Business and Technology course for the 22-23 school year. And number seven, seeking the board to approve the extra duty position for the summer for 2023 school year, and those are attached. And number eight, seeking the board to approve the extra duty position for fall sports at the high school for the 22-23 school year, and those are also attached. And number nine, seeking the board to approve Heather Cross for 0.5 hours of TVI training to take place on June 15, 2022. And number 10, seeking the board to approve Stephanie Seaman for the Summer Smart Program effective June 27 through June 20, and then again on July 5 through July 21. Under Letter G, Leaves of Absences, there is one listed in the agenda under number one. Under Letter H, Substitutes, seeking the board to ratify and affirm Madison Walker's permanent substitute teacher number two at the New Albany School retroactive to May 16, 2022 for the remainder of the school year. And number two, seeking the board to approve the following substitutes and nurses to be called on as needed basis for the remainder of the school year, and those names are listed in the agenda. Under Letter I, Tutors, seeking the board to approve Claire Errett and Brian Bacon as tutors to be called on as needed basis for the remainder of the school year. And under number two, seeking the board to approve the reappointment of tutors to be called on as needed basis for the July 1, excuse me, effective July 1 for the 22-23 school year, and those names are attached. Under Letter G, Student Teachers, seeking the board to approve Jenna Watson from Rutgers University as a student teacher with Tanya Ascalon at the New Albany School from September 6, 2022 through December 16, 2022, and then again January 2 to April 21, 2023. Number two, seeking the board to approve Emily Greco-Wright from Rutgers University as a student teacher with Leslie Astravski at the Rush Intermediate School from September 6 to December 16, 2022, and then again on January 2 to April 21, 2023. And under number three, seeking the board to approve Taylor Shade from Rowan University as a student teacher with Colleen DePietro at Cinnamons and High School from September 6 to October 20, 2022, and then again on March 13 to May 5, 2023. Under Mentor Teachers, Letter K, seeking the board to approve the extension of the previously approved mentoring for Victoria Champagn by mentor Michelle Reisman-Rush from two months to five months. And under number two, seeking the board to approve the extension of the previously approved mentoring for Joseph Pinto by Mary K. Sutton at the New Albany School from six months to eight months. Non-certificated staff.
Thank you, Mr. Capello. Ms. Ico, can I have a motion to approve Section 11 Personnel Certificated Items A through J?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Kenny. Comments or questions from the board? Hearing them, we'll take a vote. Ms. Quinn?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion approved. Moving on to Section 12, do you want to introduce?
Yeah, before we move on to Section 12, I'm actually going to ask the principals. We didn't work this out ahead of time, so I'll actually start with Mr. Gorman. You see what I did there? I realize that was only one Mr. hard to commit, so if you would introduce our new folks who are joining us in Brave Day, very long but awesome board meeting.
So first, I'd like to start by wishing Mr. Miley Llewellyn his next stage of his journey. He actually started on the same day as Cinnamons and High School, and I'm sad to see him go, but I'm sure that he will be excellent. And since the time waits for no man, if you'd like to let us introduce Mr. Brian Wilkinson, who played at Cinnamons and High School, replacing Mr. Miley. He's coming to us from Manchester, where he's a social studies teacher and was their head football coach. I had him in doubt, but he'll be excellent.
Congratulations.
Here tonight, Erin Gibbs, standing up, she's joining us from Bridget, she's a math teacher there, and is a proud addition to the Cinnamons and High School.
Welcome, welcome. All right, Ms. Melton?
Evening. I want to introduce the boards to Luke Bicanis, he's going to be our new instrumental music teacher at the middle school. Luke is coming to us with a bachelor's degree from Rutgers and double studies at drummer performance. He also earned his master's in teaching from University of the Arts, and he has been a music instructor for the Shawnee High School marching band. We are very welcome, excited, welcome to our team.
Congratulations. All right, did I miss anybody? All right, well done. Moving on to Section 12, Non-Certificated Staff. Under Letter A, Resignations/Retirement, seeking the board to accept the resignation for personal reasons of My, special education aide at the Memorial School. Under number two, seeking the board to accept the resignation for personal reasons of Tiara Turner, school bus driver, transportation. Number three, seeking the board to accept the resignation for personal reasons of Danielle Kenny, BSIP aide at the New Albany School. And number four, seeking the board to accept the resignation for personal reasons of Laura Ogden, Special Education Aide at the high school. No Leaves of Absences, under Letter C, seeking the board to approve a black seal license stipend for the following operations staff members, and they are listed in the agenda, and that is for the 22-23 school year. Number two, seeking the board to approve a maintenance electrician stipend for the following operations staff, and they are listed in the agenda for the 22-23 school year. And number three, seeking the board to ratify and affirm the appointment of Darlene Cafeteria Playground Aid at the Rush School for two and a half hours daily, and that is retroactive June 1, 2022. And then again, step one for the Cafeteria Playground Aid for the 21-22 school year, and reappointment effective September 6, 2022, for the 22-23 school year. Under number four, seeking the board to approve a request for an adjustment of the following Student Activity Center staff, their previously approved hourly rates of pay, and they are listed in the agenda. And number five, seeking the board to approve the transfer appointment of Darlene Guerin from flex-time computer technician to full-time computer technician at the Memorial School. Number six, seeking the board to approve the transfer and appointment of Lauren Luciano from Cafeteria Playground Aid to BSIP aide, and that is for the 22-23 school year. And under number seven, seeking the board to approve the appointment of Rebecca Abrams as a classroom aide by 0.75 hours daily, and that is for the 22-23 school year. Under extra duties, we have a few, seeking the board to approve the request for Beth Brezinahan, Special Education Aide at the high school to work an additional 2.75 hours to attend play unified with her assigned student. Number two, seeking the board to approve the request of Donna Hartwood, Special Education Aide at the high school to work an additional one hour while attending prom with her assigned student. And number three, seeking the board to approve the request of Elaine Murtaugh, Secretary at the Rush School to work an additional 1.5 hours effective October 19, 2021 through May 19, 2022, and this is to help with dismissal at the end of school. And number four, seeking the board to approve the request of the following Special Education staff to complete one-half hour of training on TVI, and that will take place on June 15, 2022, and those names are listed in the agenda. No Transfers, No Job Descriptions, moving on to Substitutes, Volunteers, under Letter G, the board, seeking the board to approve Richard Schaefer, substitute bus driver to be called on as needed basis for the remainder of, excuse me, effective July 1 for the 22-23 school year. And number two, seeking the board to approve the attached list of substitute school drivers and aides to be called on as needed basis effective July 1 for the 22-23 school year. And number three, seeking the board to approve Lisa Schultz, substitute bus aide to be called on as needed basis for the remainder of the 21-22 school year, and again effective July 1 for the 22-23 school year. And number four, seeking the board to approve Dama Kopola and Tiana Ward, CST summer substitute classroom aides effective July 5 to August 4. And number five, seeking the board to approve David Gleason, the substitute summer maintenance worker to be called on as needed basis effective July 1, not to exceed 20 hours weekly, and that is non-certificated staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Capello. Mr. Gaffney, can I have a motion to approve Section 12 Personnel Non-Certificated Letters A through G?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Trumpay. Comments or questions from the board? Hearing them, we'll take a vote. Ms. Quinn?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion approved. Moving on to Section 13, Curriculum and Instruction. Dr. Goldberg?
Thank you. Under 13, Letter A, requesting approval of the Professional Development requests that are attached. Under Letter B, requesting board approval of the Field Trip requests that are attached. Under Letter C, requesting approval, boards, Every Student Succeeds Act funds for the next school year for Titles 1 through 4, and the allocations are listed in the agenda. Under Letter D, requesting board approval of the amendment to the district's ARP-ESR application. Under Letter E, requesting board approval of an update to the 2022-2023 school calendar, which is attached, which includes an additional half-day in December for K to 5. And under Letter F, requesting board approval of the disposal of several keyboarding textbooks at the high school. And that's it.
Thank you, Dr. Goldberg. Ms. Trumpay, can I have a motion to approve Section 13, Curriculum and Instruction, Items A through F?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Quinn. Comments or questions from the board? Hearing them, we'll take a vote. Ms. Quinn?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion approved. Moving on to Section 13, Curriculum and Instruction. Dr. Goldberg?
Thank you. Under 13, Letter A, requesting approval of the Professional Development requests that are attached. Under Letter B, requesting board approval of the Field Trip requests that are attached. Under Letter C, requesting approval, boards, Every Student Succeeds Act funds for the next school year for Titles 1 through 4, and the allocations are listed in the agenda. Under Letter D, requesting board approval of the amendment to the district's ARP-ESR application. Under Letter E, requesting board approval of an update to the 2022-2023 school calendar, which is attached, which includes an additional half-day in December for K to 5. And under Letter F, requesting board approval of the disposal of several keyboarding textbooks at the high school. And that's it.
Thank you, Dr. Goldberg. Ms. Trumpay, can I have a motion to approve Section 13, Curriculum and Instruction, Items A through F?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Quinn. Comments or questions from the board? Hearing them, we'll take a vote. Ms. Ico?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion approved. Moving on to Section 14, Special Education. Mrs. Llewellyn?
Thank you. Under Letter A, Contracts, there are none. Under Letter B, Student Placements, seeking the board to ratify and affirm a tuition contract agreement for Burlington County Special Services at the Burlington County Alternative School for one student from May 31 to June 30, 2022. Under Letter C, Consultant Agreement, there are none, and that concludes Section 14. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Llewellyn. Mr. Kenny, can I have a motion to approve Section 14, Items A through C?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Trumpay. Comments or questions from the board? Hearing them, we'll take a vote. Ms. Quinn?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion approved. We have no policies, so we're moving on to Section 16, Business and Finance. Ms. Livinggood?
Thank you, Mrs. Fitzwater. Item A, under Grants, that the board accepts the revised 21-22 funding statement for services under Chapter 192 and 193 is attached. Item B, Finance, under Item Number One, Scholarships, that the board approves the closing of the Pirate Pride Scholarship with a fund balance of $2,660 to be transferred to the district's general fund. That the board approves the establishment of the Jim Robinson Community School and Athletics Award is attached. That the board approves the establishment of the Stanley H. Chapon Kindness Award is attached. And that the board approves the closing of the Robert J. Ashley, the Fourth Foundation Award with a fund balance of .43 to be transferred to the district's general fund. Item Number Two, that the Student Activity Center budget is approved by the board for the 22-23 school year is attached. Under Item C, Operations, discarding of equipment, that the board approves the discarding of equipment due to being obsolete and out of use is attached. Item Number Two, that the board approves the estimated tuition rates for the 22-23 school year as outlined below. Item Number Three, that the board approves and accepts with appreciation the following donations. The donation from Mansean Optical to the CHS Structured Learning Experience Program, which was a Riverton Country Club bowling party. Item Number Four, that the board approves the renewal of the Barclay Group as risk management consultant as required by the School Alliance Insurance Fund for the 22-23 school year. Item Number Five, that the board approves the renewal of the Barclay Group as property casualty insurance brokers for the 22-23 school year. Item Number Six, that the board approves the renewal of the appointment of Connor Strong and Bucklow LLC Marlton, New Jersey, as the broker of record for medical, dental, and prescription coverages effective July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023. Item Number Seven, that the board approves the resolution authorizing the establishment of the current year's surplus to reserve accounts as attached. Item Number Eight, that for the 22-23 school year, the board approves the student athletic accident insurance for the annual premium of $29,422 as outlined as follows. Item Number D, Contracts, that the board approves the renewal of the Interlocal Service Agreement with Riverside Board of Education for Transportation Services for 22-23 school year is attached. Item B, that the board approves the renewal of the Interlocal Service Agreement with Maple Shade Board of Education for mechanical services for bus repairs for the 22-23 school year at the rate of $65 per hour as attached. Item C, that the board approves the renewal of the Interlocal Service Agreement with Palmyra Board of Education for mechanic services for bus repairs for the 22-23 school year at a rate of $65 per hour as attached. Item D, that the board approves the renewal of the Interlocal Service Agreement with the Riverton Board of Education for food services for the 22-23 school year as attached. Item B, that the board approves the renewal of the Interlocal Service Agreement with Maple Shade Board of Education for mechanical services for bus repairs for the 22-23 school year at the rate of $65 per hour as attached. Item C, that the board approves the renewal of the Interlocal Service Agreement with Palmyra Board of Education for mechanic services for bus repairs for the 22-23 school year at a rate of $65 per hour as attached. Item D, that the board approves the renewal of the Interlocal Service Agreement with the Riverton Board of Education for food services for the 22-23 school year as attached. Item Number Three is an amendment to the Food Service Management Agreement, which was approved at the May 10 board meeting, which changes the annual fee from $59,339 to $59,338 and .50. Item Number Four is to approve the 22-23 anticipated contracts to be renewed, awarded, or to expire during the school year as attached. Item Number Five is that the board approves the Ambient Group as the awarded contractor for the fuel tank removal project at a total bid amount of $112,220 per the attached resolution. Item Number Six, that the board approves the agreement between the Cooper Health System and the Cinnamons and Board of Education for Professional Services for the period of July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023 is attached. Item Number Seven, that the board approves the contract between Dr. Jonathan Weissman and the Cinnamons and Board of Education for physician services for the period of July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023 at a rate of $15,000 per year as attached. And item number eight, that the board approves the renewal of the joint transportation agreements for the Special Education Summer Schools, Special Education Winter Bus Routes, and public, non-public, and vocational schools for the 22-23 school year as attached. And that concludes Business and Financial Section.
Thank you, Ms. Livinggood. Mr. Bromhall, can I have a motion to approve Section 16, Business and Financial, Items A through D?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Trumpay. Comments or questions from the board? Hearing them, we'll take a vote. Ms. Quinn?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion approved. We have no other business. Anyone in the public that wish to comment on any matters?
Sounds like done.
We are moving on to Section 19, Comments from the Board. Thank you for the donations. Congratulations to all of our board winners. You make us Pirate Proud. Good luck to all of our seniors as you move ahead to the next phase of your lives. Welcome to all of our new employees. We look forward to working with you in the years to come, and have a fantastic summer. The next regular board meeting of the Board of, the next regular meeting of the Board of Education is Tuesday, August 30, right now scheduled at 7:00 PM in the middle school cafeteria. Information may be found on the district website. And with that, we are moving back into executive session. So Ms. Quinn, can I have a motion to go back into executive session?
Um, all right, okay, aye. So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All right, and we will not be making any business decisions after we come back.
That's correct.
Correct. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, we are going into executive session.
Just as a matter of housekeeping for anyone involved in an executive session, the board is going to actually reconvene in the library for executive session so our staff can break down this room, and we will come back to this facility to close out the meeting. So, thank you.